Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order if you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Residents of Allen Park, good evening. You know, the Psalm writer David, he tells us in the first couple verses of Psalm 19, how it's a declaration and a demonstration of God's love and God's coming grace. And no less, when we look across the landscape of Metro Detroit and even here in Allen Park, while it can't be compared to perhaps the landscape of Portugal, or the Canary Islands, or the islands of Hawaii, or even Rome, still in the infrastructure that we have here in this metro area that keeps our utilities on, in this mayor and this city council and Chief Egan and the police department and Chief O'Reilly and the fire department that gives watch over all of our families, whether our utilities are always on, or sometimes we need brave people like the DTE to come out in extremely cold temperatures and get things back on. God's coming grace and His love is demonstrated, isn't it? And so tonight, we simply want to give thanks for our mayor, Madam Mayor, and the city council, Chief Egan, and Chief O'Reilly, for all the wonderful things that they, through God's hand, provides for us. So let's pray. Almighty God, we are before you this evening to simply express to you how thankful we are. Amen.
Thank you. And Pastor Bastio, if you will come up, I understand that we have an addition to our chaplain corps. Who you will introduce to us?
Yes. I'm excited to introduce someone new to you. He's not new to what we do. And today, I want to introduce Pastor Ted Nelson from the newest church that I know of in Allen Park, Detroit World Outreach on Norwood. He's standing here, and I'm going to ask Mary, his wife, to come on up. And because I don't believe in leaving children alone, my granddaughter, you better come up here, sweetheart. She didn't have school today, and she said she was bored. I said, "Come and hang out in one of the most exciting places on earth." City council. This is Mary, Pastor Ted's wife, who serves with him in ministry, and I would just like to ask you to welcome him as our newest chaplain in the city of Allen Park. Chaplain Ted Nelson. If you would allow me just to take a moment for maybe not as quick a prayer, that was a, he pulled a fast one on us there. But Chaplain Fred and Chaplain Stan, we are just happy and the other chaplains to have him here. And would you allow me to pray for Pastor Ted and his wife, Mary? Father, thank you for these wonderful folks. We receive them now as servants. Lord, we didn't even ask them, they came to us because of their love for you and a desire to serve us and serve with us. So, Lord, be with them, bless them, use them in this city for your glory and for the blessing of the people. We pray, amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to get your coat, honey? Do you want to get your coat? Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
While they're making their exit and before we do roll call, I want to remind council members to please make sure you speak directly into your microphones. Apparently, we are sometimes difficult to hear on the video, so we used to have little signs up here that says, "Speak into your microphone," but have to remember that. Michael, if you'll take the roll now.
All right. Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Present.
Councilman Marcos has asked to be excused. Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Nick.
Here.
Treasurer S. Timer.
Present.
And Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions, changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January 9th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we have a presentation, the swearing-in of a new hire police officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Everyone working together to enhance safety and service for our community and all who visit, that's our mission statement. That's what we drive every day to try and accomplish. It was rewritten by all of our officers a little over a year ago, and that's what we try and do. We work together with everyone. I just want to say, like DPS Tom and Roy and those guys, they do an amazing job getting the salt out so our officers can make the runs that they were at. They were very busy last night, it was a sheet of ice out there, so all of us working together was important. And I bring that up because this officer wanted to come before and thought, "I really want to come, there's no way I can." And things get out and people hear things, and I think the contract you're going to talk about later, I won't get into, but I think that makes us much more competitive, which is why this officer is here. So I'm very happy of that. So Officer Nag, if you want to come up. Chuck comes to us with 17 years of experience, I'd say, 13 of those are Fire Department. He did 13 years at Great Lakes Steel as a fireman, and then the last four at River Rouge Police Department. He's one of the partners from Jim Vanderey, who's here, where's Jimmy at? There he is. Jim got a life-saving award, he's done a great job. I expect the same for Chuck. If you saw his taser video, I'm very sorry, but he did pretty good. It is no fun, but he did a great job. But yeah, Chuck comes to us with a lot of experience, he's one of the best officers downriver, we're really lucky to have him. So with Chuck, that marks 13 officers in less than three years with our six academy recruits we have, and I'll just say their names real quick. Officer Bundy, Saint Andre, Conneke, Sandoval, McGrath, and O'Connell. That gets it, 19 in three years, and we have two more already to go in the academy next time, because we anticipate more retirement. So they finished their third day in the academy, so I'm guessing most of them did anywhere from three to, what, about 600 push-ups, McGrath? Yeah, I don't know, he's got that face that says, "Drop me and make me do push-ups," it's not his fault, but in, yeah, in three days. So they're earning that badge that he has on. But yeah, we're really happy to have him. Out of almost 60 candidates, five of them didn't have jobs, aren't in-service officers, so I'm glad that we got in the game and can do that. Jaden was named lieutenant, so out of three positions and out of 60, she's representing their class, so she's doing a phenomenal job, so are they. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Clerk, do you want to have your wife come up? Yeah, Nina, do you want to come up? Okay.
Would you come up, Officer Vander, if you would? He's asking, not me. He's making me put on my hat, he's coming up.
All right, I'm going to have you stand right here, and I'm not going to make you repeat after me, just at the end, say, "I swear," "I do," or "I affirm," whatever you feel most comfortable. Excuse me. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of full-time police officer to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
As is our standard procedure, you folks in the past have gotten away from us before the council could make comments, but we've changed that, so I'm going to let the council members make a comment to you.
After Mr. Kibbe takes a picture.
Okay. One more picture.
Well, I just want to congratulate you for joining our department. It sounds like you have a wealth of experience, I'm sure you're going to bring it to our city. And as I say with every officer that comes, I want to also thank your family for allowing you to continue to service, and I know they're going to be worried about you the most, even though I know we're thankful to have you in the city.
Thank you very much.
For many years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Nick, I just wanted to say, welcome to Allen Park, and thank you for joining our police academy, or the police force here, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Valerius?
Welcome to Allen Park, appreciate your service, and look forward to having you serve our community, number one, and also to your wife and family for allowing you to serve with Allen Park. Job of a police officer is often a thankless one, but we're very thankful to have you. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Welcome to Allen Park. I understand where you're standing right now, I've done it. You're going to probably love us, you might hate us, but welcome to the family for Allen Park.
Thank you.
Mr. S. Timer, do you want to say anything?
Thank you for choosing Allen Park, and thank you for your service. God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Michael?
I usually fill them in on good stuff when they already come in to get, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
And I'll just close with saying what I said in the back room, is very, very pleased to have you, and I think this is a reflection of the work that's been done by our police department, our police chief, and it speaks well for our community when we are attracting individuals like you.
Thank you.
So welcome, and we hope that you retire from here, and perhaps bring some friends. So thank you.
Thank you.
And the first item on the agenda is the appointment of Daniel P. Lloyd to the city council. According to Section 7.02 of the city charter, may I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schleck. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. Lloyd will please come up to be sworn in.
You guys are giving me a workout. We have a special serve.
Mood lighting?
It's a Twilight.
It's a mood lighting.
You will have to sign it in a jersey.
Yeah.
You know the routine.
I swear I do, or I affirm.
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of city councilmen to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
All right. Congratulations. Appreciate you, number one. Appreciate you, Mike. Thank you.
Just make sure you speak into the mic.
As if, yeah, as if you need it.
May I move for Mr. Timer?
You might have a problem.
Does anyone want to say anything at this point? Then we'll move on to the next item of business, and that is the appointment of Councilman Barr as the alternate on the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority Board. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. City administrators report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, welcome Councilman Lloyd back. Just a few updates on a few items going on here in the city of Allen Park. Ice Arena, they were pretty busy over the last weekend, the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Weekend, had 37 games being played during their tournament sessions. They have another seven tournaments over the next nine weeks, so very busy there at the Ice Arena. Great job by Rob Fulton, Kyle Carr, and Evan Taylor in the facility, has gotten rave reviews from many of the visitors. The street selected for the 2024 Street Improvement and Concrete Street Section Program, going to be Wick Road, Pelham Road to the railroad tracks, Herrick Street from Pelham Road to the cul-de-sac, and Brody Avenue, Pelham Road to the cul-de-sac as well. This will be in addition to the work that will continue on Reek Road to get that finished up, the bridge work on Reek Road, bridge work on the Service Drive on M-39 by the, it's going to be right there by the Children's Center there, the, I'm thinking of nursery, but, the preschool, thank you. And then also Pinecrest Boulevard will be repaved in 2024 as well. Just an update here, and Police Chief Chris Egan, Sergeant Eric Jablonsky, and Bill Mihal will be attending the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police 2024 Winter Professional Development Conference in Grand Rapids, that's going to be from February 7th to the 9th. This conference will assist in the accreditation process that the police department is working on. I know that was a question earlier tonight, and it's a process, we have a couple items later on that's going to help in that situation, and I know possibly some that'll come up in the contract discussion as well. I just want to congratulate the following employees that reached milestones with the years of service at the city of Allen Park. It'll be Roy Shippman, DPS Supervisor Hill, he reached 15 years on February 2nd, and Patrick Moore from the police department, he's going to reach 15 years on February 11th. And just a reminder here that the city hall will be closed Monday, February 19th for President's Day, that is one week after the Lions play in the Super Bowl.
May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments, you are limited to four minutes, all we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live, please do not provide your full address, the only other thing we ask is that you be civil.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Edward Sparker, I live on Meyer Avenue. Couple thank-yous, Mayor, Council, and city department leaders, thank you for everything you do. Big shout-out to the DPS and Water Department, seeing their trucks out salting and plowing the snow, and made everything real passable, real quick. Dennis Marcos isn't here today, Councilman Marcos, but I'd like to point out that National Volunteer Day is Saturday, April 20th, and this is what brings me up to the podium. I'm asking the residents of Allen Park to select one of the following events, and just volunteer four hours of your time to any of the upcoming events that we're going to have in the city. The Allen Park Street Fair, the Allen Park Car Show, the Pizza Wine and Beer Tasting Event, the Allen Park Made in Michigan Event, the Christmas Parade, and of course, the Beautification Good Neighbor Saturday Cleanups. Four hours out of one year, from many of the residents, it just blows my mind what we could achieve in this city. And of course, all these events will be posted on Facebook and of course, on the city website. One last thing about volunteering, and the benefits to the people that volunteer are, number one, it gives you a good sense of achievement and purpose. Number two, helps you feel part of a community, and it really does, I can attest to that. Number three, helps you feel better about yourself by improving your self-esteem and your confidence. Number four, helps you share your talents, learn new skills, and create better work and life balance, and of course, it opens up the opportunity for you to meet and network with others. And of course, last, helps you meet new people which can help you feel more connected and valued in the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm here, I'm Len Perotta, Marquis. I'm here this evening, as most of you know, I have a business here, and you've probably seen me around town, I do flags. I recently did a flag for the fire department, and in doing that, I've been planning a surprise for all of us, and I decided to make a flag for the city, for all the residents, for everyone here, everyone sitting here, everyone that works here. And that's why I'm up here tonight. And I wanted to also thank everybody for all the support. It's been great, this year, Mayor, Nancy, Gary, you guys in particular too, have been really helping me, and I wanted to say thank you. And I, my wife made, covered that thing. But I wanted to present this to you guys with hopes that maybe this can hang in the city, in the city hall. I know it's not Michigan, Mark, but we can, but this is a gift for the whole city of Allen Park. Could you turn around? I sure can. Thank you, man. But it's a lot of hard, a lot of hard hours doing this. I put in probably a good month of carving, to, a good month of carving to make this, but it's my great privilege to give this to the city. And after the meeting, I was kind of hoping that everyone up here would come down and sign it, so that as we move forward in history, everyone will remember us.
I got to ask you, Del Perotta?
Yeah.
Okay, he was a councilman several times, but it's funny you want us to sign that, because I wanted to take the drawers out of old, old city hall, because a bunch of the old councilmen would sign and sign.
Yep, I remember that.
I mean, you had everybody, Bacabella, Truout, you know, so it's ironic you bring that up.
Well, I signed it already, I dated it for everybody, and I'd really appreciate if we could all sign it afterwards for you guys, and turn it over to you.
Mr. Perotta, may I say, we are honored?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Means the world to me.
We are honored.
Oh, thank you so much. Have a great night, I'll see everyone after the meeting. I'm going to leave it right here for you guys. It has a little weight.
First off, speaking of Detroit Lions, back in September when I was sitting up here, they won their first game, and I said, "They're going to the Super Bowl this year," and everyone in the room laughed. Look, just one more game, that's all they need. And speaking of history, that will be making history, and I hope maybe the city could maybe, for the giant tire or something, if they do go to the Super Bowl, light everything in blue, support them since their home practice field is in Allen Park. And also, speaking of history, I came here today because this is the first time in Allen Park history, we have a Madam Mayor and a Madam Mayor pro tem ever happen in Allen Park, so just, again, being a history buff of Allen Park, congrats to our new treasurer, Tim, and it's like deja vu, Dan Lloyd, when I got sworn in four years ago, it was the second in January meeting, so, but I hope everyone up here is treating Mr. Barr and Nick, because it's, besides me and Tony now, same councils four years, last four years or so, and it was a good time, and it's just like a family and all, so I hope everyone's respecting one another, whether you vote yes, whether you vote no, respect one another And always remember that when you're up here, you're always working for the residents, and the, sometimes, you know, they, it's, some of the department heads, they are residents as well, so think of that. And then I know, I've been watching some of the meetings, and there was a question about with Mark having contract, and I remember that meeting when he became our minister back in September 2015, it was a two-hour meeting, so when everyone complains, "Oh, I helped this meeting last maybe half hour, 40 minutes," back in the day, they were two, two and a half, they started at seven, so personally, I do agree with Mr. Ray McGusson when he said, "Add another minute for council, residents' comments or two." They used to talk twice back, back in the day, in the beginning and at the end and stuff, but, you know, just, I would say in the future, someone make them, because I used, I should have when I was on council, make a motion just to add two more minutes, just so that everyone's happy. But again, just keep up the good work, just, again, we marry you, are working for the residents, whatever, it is a tough job, so, but if you guys ever need to have a question, I'm always there to answer if you need help, and then, as always, I've always said, support your local businesses, so they're the key to our downtown, and always stay positive, stay safe, especially these icy roads and sidewalks, and go Lions.
Hello, my name is Laura Karati, and I live on Jonas, and I want to begin by congratulating Dan Lloyd on his appointment to council as both my child educator and on council. I feel confident in his leadership, and I'm very grateful that he is in his position. With that said, I do have a few concerns over how this came to be. While I realize that Mr. Lloyd was next in line to fill a vacancy, it's how there came to be a vacancy that I am questioning. More often than I'd like, I hear people say, "I hate politics," or, "I don't vote because it doesn't matter anyway." As a passionate lover of democracy, it feels like a gut punch when I hear this. I can't help but feel like what played out two weeks ago at our last council meeting is a perfect example of why people hate politics and feel their vote doesn't matter. Recently, the voters of Allen Park spoke, and they said they wanted to have an elected treasurer. The election was the first time that we, this current election was the first time that we were allowed to have a voice on that position. that we were allowed to have a voice on that position. Though our voice was only individual, one individual, he had no competition. No one else showed an interest or used the period before the election to campaign or fight for the job that they desired, and we see how that turned out. And then two weeks ago, we had a councilman resign. Stated that the treasurer was the preferred position. And as a voter hearing that, it kind of destroyed my confidence. And then we find out that there was another individual who desired the position. He too was a business owner, he too had served on commissions, and he too was a longtime Allen Park resident. He also had a degree in finance, and he was not even granted an interview. And that, to me, is what makes the entire situation questionable. I understand that everything was done legally, I know that the charter was followed. What I am struggling with as a voter and as a citizen is knowing, feeling like there was more to this appointment than him necessarily being the most qualified person for the job. I agree with something that Mr. Mizzi said two weeks ago, there should be an elected position in this office. But that person should be elected to that office. I try not to complain if I can't offer a solution. It might not be an actual solution, but at least it's not just complaining. And that's why I'm here today. Mr. Lib, excuse me, Mr. Liberati served two percent of his term. Twenty-eight days out of fourteen hundred and, or four, yes, fourteen hundred and sixty. Our current charter states that council will appoint a new treasurer within sixty days. I am here to ask about the potential for an amendment to our charter to specify a specific amount of time that must be served unless a special election be called, say ten percent or less. Not only this will, will this allow voters to elect the treasurer, as was the will of the people, it will also not allow for opportunities for people to question motivations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Kittle, Hanford Street. In following up what you said, I agree with her a hundred percent. My only question is, is in the charter, section seventeen point oh-two, subsections D, E, and F state that the council shall appoint and confirm who they want for the treasurer, which means the council has to interview all attendees that prefer to have that position. I'd like to know if the council interviewed everybody who applied for that position. Did the council interview anybody?
This is for public comments, it's not for U N A.
Okay, so how do I get the answer to this then? Because I don't feel the council gathered together and interviewed the person for the treasurer job. Nothing against him.
We reviewed the resume that was presented to us.
Yeah, I understand that, but how do I get the answer to my question? If the council had a meeting, and the council, as a joint effort, interviewed all candidates and made the best decision?
I'm not sure how I would interpret that.
I don't even know, like, if there was a meeting, they would have had to post it, and it wasn't, there was nothing.
Okay, so assume there was not a meeting, then you did not follow the council bylaws or the chapter bylaws of the city.
Well.
That's where I'm getting at.
Go ahead.
So, as, here's what the process, as I understand it was. At a, at a council meeting, the mayor made a statement that anyone interested in running for the office of treasurer or being appointed, she made that, you know, to submit an application. So, and then that was also posted. And two people, Mr. Mister and Mr. S. Heimer, I'm not good with any of them, sorry. They both applied, they both made a submission. I believe they made it to the mayor, and then that was shared with all the council, council persons. And they were given the opportunity to do whatever investigation they wanted to do. They then, at the meeting, voted as to who they wanted to act as treasurer.
Okay, at the last meeting, it was a recommendation from the mayor. They did not have a joint effort to appoint this person or interview him, that's where I'm getting at. And any type of position according to the charter, I'm not saying me, the charter says the council. It does not say an appointment from the mayor, though I know she has the authority to appoint most people. Our charter specifically says that it has to be the council. Did not say appointment of the mayor with the council approval. That's a different horse altogether. That's where my questioning is coming in.
No, that's a very good question, but the mayor did not, the mayor made a recommendation.
Right.
And the council was giving their information, and they were given the opportunity to vote on it. So if they wanted more information, if they wanted to do a different process. Okay, I'm just telling you what the process is.
No, no, I understand, but in good standing, on any good government, on any good function, you join together as a team. You look at your candidates as a team. You don't say, you look at them, you look at them, you look at them, you got questions, you'll, and then we get back and vote on it. I've never, in all my life, in all the council meetings in the cities I've attended, have ever seen where it wasn't a joint effort, where it was just one person, if you feel like talking to that person, fine, here's our candidates, fine. That's all I'm saying, you're, I'm worried, and it's not this, I'm worried about being open up to a legality thing on this.
You make some good points, but I will point out that the chart does not say that we have to go through an interview process. All of the council members received the two resumes that I received. And it was open to anyone to make comments. I reviewed both of them. I made a recommendation, any council person here could have, excuse me. Any council person here could have indicated that they did not agree, or that they would prefer another candidate. And in fact, Mr. Mister came up during public comments and made a case for his being considered.
Did anybody meet with the other candidate? Anybody question the other candidate? Anybody look at his resume?
They were all given his resume.
I'm just.
And I could not attest to whether or not they contacted him, but they had his resume.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, Tim, congratulations, and treasurer. I did not know that this was gonna come up, but I, I am here to address, for the people at home too, about the questions that came up, to correct some things that were said recently. Mayor had just said that there was a resume submitted. The thing that was asked for was our name. Submit your name to the mayor, I, I submitted the name to the mayor and to Council Pro Tem. No resume was asked for, no letter or anything like that. I assumed there would be an interview afterwards, but there was not. So just for, for your record and for everybody else at home, that there was no interview afterwards. And resume, it was not a resume. I just kind of put down some thoughts, some bullet points, and said, okay, if they're interested, they'll call me in, and we'll go from there. That's it, so, so, you know, not being interviewed can bring up a can of worms for the city, and we'd like to avoid that at all costs, because it just, it was a weird situation where it just came up, a retirement, a resignation, and a Pro Tem wanting the job. So it was, it was strange, but just to correct that, it was not a resume that was submitted.
Right, it was a letter.
It was just, it was asked just for a name. So that's what I, I gave a little bit more, and I didn't know I had to do that. So just, I don't want people to think like, oh, that was my resume, and it's not. It was just bullet points.
You're right, it wasn't, it wasn't full blown.
So, yeah.
It did contain information about your background.
Well, that, that's really lame, so, I don't want, don't want you to think that. So, just to answer those questions, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, made a good point. We will learn from this experience, should we ever be unfortunate to have to experience it again. Did appreciate what you did, including your letter, however. There's no further people coming up for public comment. I do want to make a comment at this point. As some of you may or may not be aware, we, we have had an individual who has come to meetings in the past, who was a former councilman, who regularly comes and speaks during public comments. And if you are not aware of it, I would ask that you please keep Mr. Dennis Hayes in your thoughts and prayers as he is making a transition. Thank you. Now we come to the consent agenda, which contains claims and accounts, and the payroll report may have a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Resolutions, resolution one is to approve the 2024 hardship guidelines for the Allen Park Board of Review. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Kibby, will you explain that? Or, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you here, this is the City of Allen Park hardship guidelines for the 2024 Board of Review. For those of you that don't know, the Board of Review is a local appointed group responsible for hearing and deciding on property tax appeals. They're your neighbors, just like most other boards and commissions, they convene in March. There's a couple different exemptions, this specific one for hardship. We will have information at the cashier's desk for the finance team. But this follows Public Act 253 of 2020. It was signed into law December twenty-third, 2020. And the act made several changes to the poverty exemption, which was MCL 211 dot two-seven U. That will impact, impact how the exemption is handled, starting with 2021 tax year. To be eligible for that, there is a certain list of qualifications and guiding principles. So we will have this on our website, right, Mr. Kibby? We will have this all on our website, but also, if you could stop by, if you have questions specifically, you can call my office or call the finance office, and we'll make sure that we email this to you right away. And I will stick around after the meeting if anybody has any specific questions about this. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed. We have a resolution to award the sealed bid for the purchase of three sets of electro-hydraulic rescue stabilization tools and related equipment to McQueen Emergency at a price of forty thousand, nine hundred and five thousand dollars, using a 2022 FEMA grant. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Chief O'Reilly.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm here tonight to get final approval to accept the sealed bid that was put forward by McQueen Emergency to purchase the, basically this Jaws equipment, three sets, that was awarded to us through a FEMA grant.
And that's a 2022 grant, right?
Yes. It was a 2022 grant that was awarded in September twenty-three.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
We move on to resolution three, to approve the fire department request to apply for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for firefighter technical rescue gear for forty-five thousand dollars with no matching funds. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Chief O'Reilly.
Yes, again, I'm here tonight to ask for permission to apply for the firefighter grant through Firehouse Subs. We would be applying for twenty-six sets of firefighter technical rescue gear. It's a form of turnout gear, but it does not have the thermal layer that is required for house fires and interior fires. So it would keep the crews safe at MVA's motor vehicle accidents, outside fires. And this gear does not have the PFOS that causes cancer in it. So if we can wear our turnout gear, interior turnout gear, less, it saves wear and tear in that, and then it also helps less exposure to the crews.
And if I may, through the chair, these, we're just going through the process that we normally have done for the last couple of years, making sure council is aware of the grant applications as they go on, or ratifies them, let's say, or something.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution four is to approve the police department's request to apply for the DCC technology grant funds to purchase twelve Axon Taser VII models, holsters, cartridges, and training cartridges in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, with a request to use drug forfeiture for an annual, for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Chief Egan.
Yes, Madam Mayor, requesting to try and submit to get money from DCC on a grant that we worked with for technology, trying to go through all of our department's needs. Our Tasers are getting old, very outdated. So we're looking at what we need, not what we want. This is a Taser VII, which isn't the latest version, Taser X, which is, it's like new technology that comes out, it's way too crazy expensive, over a hundred thousand dollars. So this is better than what we have, and we're looking at submitting it. I believe we'll get somewhere between thirty-five to forty thousand dollars from the DCC, working with Jim Perry and Ken Mackey, Bob Heck, on this. So I'm asking for, to be able to use drug forfeiture if we need it, up to ten thousand dollars. I'm thinking it might come in somewhere around four or five thousand, but we don't want to have to come back twice to you and let you know, so.
Any questions? I had one just educational. I seem to recall that these have a set period of life. I mean, they can't be, they can be reused X number of times, and then they are.
Right, you can't really rebuild a Taser. It's, it's new technology, things like that. So they have all kinds of different ones that have cameras on them and things like that. Our officers have body cameras that they wear, so I don't know that we need to pay the extra money to get the ones with the cameras, as well as the docking stations and the software. So this is a Taser VII model, which is more than adequate for what we use it for. It really comes down to using this so you don't have to possibly take a life or fight someone and hurt them or workers' comp issues, so. Yeah, I do anticipate us getting this if we submit it, so, I'm hoping.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Up, up, opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution five is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to bid, to bid since using the state of Michigan Motorola solution pricing of state of Michigan, and purchase four new Motorola rep radios from Motorola Solutions in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents using our state forfeiture account. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Seconded by Mr. Schleck. Chief Egan.
We're in the same situation as the fire department, as Chief O'Reilly talked about at his last council meeting. We're trying to replace what we need right now. So you can see, four radios is almost twenty-four thousand dollars, it's very expensive. This is just preps, it's not our mobiles, it's not our terminals and things like that. That's well over two hundred thousand dollars for our department, over millions for Downriver. We are trying, as the Downriver Chiefs units, to work on grants. It's not there yet, so we know there's a deadline with twenty-five coming, we're working on that. So I think with the help of DCC and our, and our reps, we're hoping to get that done as they also look into different dispatch options for the future that I think are probably years away, so we need, we need help now. So this, this gets us lumped on down the road to get what we need with their officers that we have.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Resolution six is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to bid since the sole provider and approve the purchase of one Hydrastall screw pump model through the local distributor Dubois Cooper Associates in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars with funds from account five ninety-two, five sixty-nine, eighty-five. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick. Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
Good evening.
Oh, is what we're buying?
You are buying a seventy-five horsepower, state-of-the-art, no, pump. That, uh, there's five at the retention basin, as where seventy percent of our sanitary goes to, and then we pump it out of there through the city of Lincoln Park to do an interceptor on the Riverside Drive. There is five total, four run at any given time, depending on the weather. We've replaced four of them over the last six years, this is the fifth one we need to re- This is the fifth one we need to replace out of the five that are in there. The current ones are above 15 years old, the last one we're replacing right now. They have a 10 to 15-year lifespan, depending on how many times you rebuild them, or how many hours they operate, depending on weather.
This is the same model that we already have?
Same, same exact model, yes. We're not, we're not changing anything.
The reason for not to waive the bid process is consistency.
It's, correct, it's also the only provider. So in areas of this, sometimes with pumps and different equipment when we're purchasing them, they have regional people that sell the certain brands, certain machines, certain things. Pump, this pump is the same way. They're the only supplier in the state of Michigan. I cannot purchase the same brand in Ohio or anywhere else because that is not allowed through their company. So therefore, it's considered a sole provider. I have no other way to bid it.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution seven, to approve the budget amendment request to transfer $220,000 from the sectioning budget under the major street fund account to account 203-479. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray.
So here I am asking for the council and mayor to approve, myself and the finance, to transfer funds from the major Act 51 funding for sectioning to the local. We spent over $220,000 on local roads, more than we had originally budgeted for this fiscal year. Kind of did that on purpose, seeing that we had more need in the local area with the ability to transfer money from the major into it. The reason being is the major roads we currently have are being done through the bonds and other avenues. So this way, we could take care of some more local roads with that funds.
Any comments or questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
So because of this, the, up until the end of this financial year, the main focus is going to be on our major roads.
Major roads, yes, sir.
Going forward.
We're looking at doing enterprise, maybe a little bit off of Cortland. That is about the amount of money that'll be left. That's for sectioning, that is not our millage program. We will still be doing Reek, and we are looking at doing Pinecrest this summer as well, on a different avenue.
And as you mentioned, the reason for this is just because in the city of Allen Park, the vast majority of our roads are the, what are classified as mine, through like the Act 51 money that we give to the state, is classified as minor roads.
Is designated, yes. There's local and there's major designated roads. We kind of picked them with the state years ago. They're usually big thoroughfares, this would be a major road, so I'll use examples. Pinecrest, Reek, Rosedale, Park Avenue, Inglewood, Cortland, Enterprise, and there's probably a couple more, but such of that magnitude is the major roads. Typically, our major roads is higher funding that we get from the Act 51 than your local. When we do the budget process, we tend to transfer some of the money over to local to get more local roads taken care of. This time, we went over that, more allowed 50 more percent, up to 50% of the major availability to move over to local to cover that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I seem to recall also that you can transfer from major to local, but you can never take, transfer from local to major.
No, you cannot. I, I thought you could. I thought you can, a portion.
You can transfer 50% of major in one fiscal year, and that's it. You can transfer as much local to major as you want, but only 50% and one time, so I can't, if you got a million dollars last year, and you get a million dollars this year, and you want to transfer over a million dollars, you're only eligible to do 500,000, one, one time, just for that in, in one year.
Thank you.
So that's what we're asking you to do. And that's not 50%.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution eight is to approve the sale of the tax-foreclosed commercial property at 6834 Park Avenue to the Allen Park Downtown Development Authority at a cost of $18,614.58, and authorize the city attorney to prepare a purchase agreement and arrange for a closing date. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
It's good evening. In July 2022, the city council approved acquiring 6834, formerly Flowers and the Avenue, from the Wayne County Rader First Refusal Program, with the intent of selling it to the DDA at the cost that we would incur. Have listed out those costs, majority of them were the back taxes that were paid to Wayne County. We also have some water bills, two tax bills, and it totals out to be $18,614. Back in October of '23, council approved the ordinance that's required to sell city property. So this is just the process of letting the council know what the value of the sale is going to be to the DDA, and getting that approved.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution has been approved. Because we are going to be going into a closed session, we will do the council comments at this point. This evening, we will start with Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by saying, welcome back, Dan. Going to be good to sit next to you, just don't scream in my ears too loud. Those that are up here probably get that joke. I also want to say thank you to the police and fire and the DPS for all the work they've done, especially in this cold weather. It's astounding, especially what I've seen and read about, with all the water main breaks and how icy things have been, so. Thank you. Incredibly thank you for that out there. I wanted to also say thank you to Lempurada for presenting the flag that's beautiful, and I know it's going to look great in City Hall, and the time and effort shows, time and time again, that, how our citizens pay attention to us, even though they might not show up in chambers as much as our colleague Arcos says, that it shows that they're watching and paying attention to our city, and it makes us stand on our toes, and shows that we are continually reading and doing due justice with the packets that we receive. I also wanted to say that I hope the groundhog next week does not see a shadow, so we can hopefully end winter a little earlier than expected. And I ought to say, go Lions. It's exciting to see our city and our region do so well. I know everyone that I've talked to is excited about it, so. Go Lions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
First off, I want to say how thankful I am for the opportunity to be here and serve. This is, this is not how I wanted to get up here. It is not. And I know, hearing you, I know it's not the way that you wanted me to get up here either. But now that I'm here, I'm, I promise, like I've said many times up here, I have a sacred commitment to democracy and the importance of serving the people of Allen Park. When I was out making the pitch for people to write my name in for city council in this term, I, I promised to take care of our infrastructure, our library, our fire department, our roads. I promised to make sure that we were fully funded, I'm sorry, excuse me, fully staffed, and not just our fire and our police department, but our Department of Public Service, which has been a struggle. And I am going to live up to these promises. Again, this is not how I wanted to be here, but now that I'm here, you have my absolute commitment that I will do everything within my power to make sure that I make the citizens of Allen Park proud. Thank you, everybody, so much that supported me, and your kind words. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
Okay, I wanted to give a couple shout-outs tonight, so one is for the DPS. I had, during that winter storm, I had just pulled in from work, and all of a sudden, my neighbor's branch, big, huge branch fell down, and within five minutes, I'm sure DPS didn't know that, but here they come around the corner, and they picked up all the branches on Pinecrest, so it just missed me, so. I was grateful for them. They were out, and then they did do a wonderful job on the roads. I saw them all out with salt trucks and plowing and everything, so thank you for that. So Glass Onion is celebrating their eighth years in business, so congratulations to them. And then a young eighth-grade boy, Ben Berry, he's in the middle school. He's a swimmer, and he completed a full sweep with state qualifying in all 10 swim events. So good luck to them at states, and there were 13 other kids that qualified, so way to go, coaches and students. Also, Len, thank you very much for that flag. I know how hard you worked on that and how long it took you, and I know there's a lot of love that goes into that, so thank you very much for that. And like the mayor said, on a sadder note, my prayers and thoughts go out to Dennis Hayes, as he is now in hospice. And I know a lot of you know Dennis from coming up to the podium and talking passionately about things that, that he believes in. But I've known Dennis for a while, and years ago, Dennis would do things for the residents, like there was a lady, they would come up. She, well, she was an older lady on Cleveland, and she couldn't take care of her lawn. And she had a double lot, and it was all overgrown, and we kept getting residents that came up and her neighbors complaining about all the overgrown in their yards, and she got fined, and she couldn't pay it, and it kept growing and growing, and finally Dennis said, you know what, on Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, anybody who can, bring their rakes, bring their shovels, whatever thing, we're going to clean this up. And that's just one story of Dennis Hayes. And so we all went, and it was a lot of work, but we cleaned it up, and so you could see her lawn again. So that is how I'm going to always remember Dennis, on doing those things for the residents, so. With that, everybody have a good night and stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
Just a couple things. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Dan, welcome back. You know how I feel about you. I'm glad to see you back, sitting up here and doing the work that you love to do. And it's a very welcome addition to council. Couple other things, you know what? I'd came up and started talking about volunteerism and volunteering, and then that was followed up by the awesome example of, you know, a master art smith and putting together a beautiful tribute, not only to our country, but a gift to the city. And that's so much appreciated, because that's, that's an excellent example of just volunteering your, your efforts and your skills to present such an amazing gift to council. For the two ladies, I wrote your names down really quick. I, I feel you. I really do. I'm a Melnap resident, and you know, you talk about voter feelings, and, you know, regardless how the charter was followed, it brought back memories of the Melvindale High School election, where in Melnap District, that was voted down 90%, and their council went into closed session and passed it anyway. Again, it takes a lot away from voter confidence in regards to the way things are done. So I hear you, and I, I felt very similar, no disrespect to him or anyone else. But it does, you know, it does erode some voter confidence issues, for sure. And I appreciate you coming up and expressing your thoughts, because I had the same thoughts as well, even as a city council member, so. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
Well, I cannot really expound upon what everybody else has said. Dan, welcome. I hope we can definitely work some things out and work together. I want to say thank you to everybody that came up. I understand the same thing, like what the councilman Valerius said about the questioning. I will say this. I, based on the information I had, I made a decision. I'm going to say, I think I made the right decision. Maybe it's wrong, I don't know. To all the departments here in Allen Park, thank you for all, what you have been doing. To the police, fire, DPS, you guys have been working your butts off lately. Other than that, the wood flag, love it. With Dennis, I'm, I've had lunch with him a few times. Last time about a month and a half ago, two months ago, and it was, it's a shock. It really is. Finally, let's go Lions, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Ass timer.
Thank you, Mayor. Make this quick. Welcome, Dan. Thank you, Lenny, for the flag, and prayers for Dennis. God bless and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi.
Just to thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
I'll make this brief before we go into the closed session. Somebody had asked about snow emergencies, and this is not something that I do on my own. When a snow emergency is declared, that is done in conjunction with consultation with the DPS department and their needs and, and their assessment of the conditions. However, I would say that anytime we have any meaningful amount of snowfall, it would behoove you, if at all possible, to remove your vehicles from the street so that it makes it easier for our DPS to plow and to salt, and keep your vehicles safe. Dennis and others aren't here. I will reinforce what they say. I know he's always asking people to come to meetings. If nothing else, these are viewable. They are shown on your local TV stations, and they are also on YouTube videos, so you can watch them any time of day or night. In case you get bored, you can watch them at 2:00 AM in the morning. You can turn up the volume, you can repeat whatever you like, but they are available. And I think it is important because you see what is going on, and you hear the comments that are made, and it's quite educational. Just a reminder, and we're going to get this out here now, our February meetings are going to be back-to-back. I should have left this up to Mike, he, he will get to it. We will have a meeting on February 13th and on February the 20th because of early voting and the primary. And the Tuesday, February 20th meeting will not be held here because of the early voting and the utilization of the facilities by the clerk's office. We will be holding that meeting at the DPS facility, so if you want to plan ahead, put that note on your calendar. With that, I will ask for a motion to convene into a closed session.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Valerius. We require a roll call vote.
All right, Madam Mayor, I have a motion, excuse me, by Councilman Lloyds, supported by Councilman Valerius, to convene in the closed session for contract labor negotiations with the Police Patrol Union, contract tentative agreement as permitted under MCL 15268 subsection C. Shall we convene Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Pro temp Nick?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
I know. Change of, change of.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses habit, we will convene.
Thank you.